My name is Jonathan Lovitz. I'm a proud member of the Center City Residents Association and a local right here in Center City, Philadelphia, and I couldn't be happier to have been asked to emcee tonight's program, asking the important questions like, we're vaccinating, now what? So, welcome to each and every one of you for joining us. This is a great conversation to be had and a true collaboration between many, many Center City organizations. Before we get started, a little housekeeping that throughout the conversation tonight, our Q and A and chat box will be open. Keep the questions coming. We have the experts here for you. But also, please be advised that we are recording. The Zoom meeting will be recorded for future public viewing. By attending, you automatically consent to being recorded and shared with the Center City Residents Association for your use of image and voice recording. If you don't consent to being recorded during the Zoom meeting, please let the host know at the beginning of the meeting so that we can help you exit. But we will have this available for you as a recording afterwards. For those of you who are new to the organization, welcome. CCRA and all of our partner organizations are so happy to have you here. The CCRA is a civic organization representing over 1,000 households in the Center City West area. We serve as the primary conduit between our residents in the city of Philadelphia, elected officials, who are all concerned about the same things, an environment, a public safety, and a welcoming, supportive community that helps all of us succeed. We're nonpartisan but are known for putting on events of public interest such as this one, all about post-COVID vaccination. We are the people-powered voice for a better community. And I want to share a special bit of thanks for all of the community organizations that came to help us put this on tonight, including the Independence Business Alliance, Philadelphia Fight, who you'll hear from later, Philly Family Pride, Liberty City, Action Wellness, Babashi, the Washington Square West Civic Association, and others. Thank you, thank you, thank you for helping turn out already over 150 people with us tonight. So, thank you for being here and spreading the good word. And once this program is out live, we hope you'll share it with all of your colleagues. So now, let's turn to our signature speaker, who we're so grateful to have with us today. I think all of us have a tremendous amount of questions. So, we wanted to bring you one of the bright lights in our community, one of the star voices in the medical community certainly, to help answer them. So, please help welcome our keynote speaker, Dr. Sandra Brooks, Chief Medical Officer at Jefferson, also the Executive Vice President and Chief Community Health Equity Officer for Jefferson. Dr. Brooks, it is wonderful to have you with us. Thank you so much for being here. We can only imagine how busy you are these days.
Well, thank you. I really, it's an honor to be here to talk, speak with you all virtually. And, oh, we can only hope for the day that we can meet again in larger groups in person. But today, we're going to talk a little bit about, you know, what to do after vaccination. Take the next slide, please. The, you're probably aware that we now have three vaccines approved for emergency use authorization. The Pfizer and the Moderna vaccine have been available. Most recently, the J and J vaccine is now available. The principal differences being in terms of how they need to be stored, how they're administered, and the number of doses. Clearly, the Pfizer and the Moderna require two doses at different intervals, 21 days for Pfizer, 28 days for Moderna. The J and J vaccine is one dose. And so, a mechanism of action, a bit different. The Pfizer, Moderna, both mRNA vaccines, they help to, once injected, they create an antibody response to the part of the infectivity part of the virus versus the J and J vaccine is a viral vector, which does not have active virus, but creates an antibody response based on an adenovirus. The efficacy, pretty amazing for Pfizer, Moderna. The J and J vaccine, while slightly lower in overall efficacy, it's really quite good against severe disease. And really, when we're talking about these vaccinations, we're really talking about preventing the type of illness that lands you in the hospital, lands you in the intensive care unit. So, none of these viruses or these vaccines are going to be 100% perfect, but they're very, very good at preventing severe disease, which is really what we're aiming to do. There are studies now that are going on, looking at vaccinations for teenagers and for children. But for right now, they're really for over 16 or over 18 years old. The side effect profile, pretty similar for, for all in terms of most people having some arms soreness for a day or two, maybe low grade fever, or some people showing a similar leg or malaise, just not feeling quite right. But typically, those, so the side effects are fairly simple and in no way shape or form bear any resemblance to how sick people get with, if they're infected with COVID, a disease that kills almost 100, 200 people that it affects. And really, serious side effects, really quite rare. You know, the most serious being having extreme allergic reaction. As you can see on the bottom there, extremely rare. Next slide, please. So, um, so there's been some talk about the variants and how effective the vaccines are against some of the variants you've been, may have been hearing about, the South African variant or the UK variant. Essentially, you know, the jury is out on exactly how effective the current vaccines are. But we think that there is some protection against the variants. And again, we'll have no more information with the coming days. But the, the goal is that by getting vaccinated, we should be protected from, again, developing severe disease. Next slide. So, what to do when you're fully vaccinated? So, clearly, right now, we were still in a phase transition of relative scarcity of the vaccine. Hopefully, everybody here is aware that we, there are, there is a theme aside at the convention center. There are a couple of community sites that are being run by the Department of Health. At Jefferson, we also are, have started to vaccinate the community, really starting with our patients and extending invitations. But the principal challenge has been knowing how much vaccine we're going to have so that we can reasonably make sure that we can get people appointments. But the hope is, in the coming months, that that will be less of an issue. And so, our hope is by the late spring, early summer, that the vast majority of people who want to get a vaccine will be able to at least make an appointment for vaccine. So, so when are you fully vaccinated? So, again, for those, if you look at this little graphic here, showing the folks getting vaccinated on the left, and then the proximity time that you need to become fully vaccinated is about two weeks after your second dose. So, if you're getting Pfizer and Moderna, it will be about two weeks after you've gotten your second dose. If you're getting the J and J vaccine, it would be two weeks after your, after your first dose. There is some protection after the first dose. But again, that is really, it's about half of what the full dose vaccination is. So, we really don't advise people to let up until they've been fully vaccinated. Because again, there are some small isolated reports of people getting infected with COVID in between vaccinations. So, very important, if you're getting Pfizer, Moderna, start, if you start with Pfizer and with Pfizer, start with Moderna and with Moderna. Don't mix and match. And make sure you get your appointment for your follow-up vaccine before you leave your appointment for your first vaccine. There is a window. So, for some reason, you can't get the vaccine right at the time of the appointment. You do have a grace period. So, you definitely want to make sure you're reaching out to get that rescheduled. Next slide. So, what can we do after we're vaccinated? And again, you know, some of this is going to be guided by person's risk tolerance, the number of people who they're interacting with, the risk that that person might develop severe COVID, and whether or not who you're, who you're planning to gather with or want to gather with has been vaccinated. So, in all of this, it's going to be a risk versus benefit because no one has, you know, the rock-solid answer that's been in existence for years and years. And we can look to a textbook and point to it and say, that's the answer. So, so, but the CDC recommendations, when I initially, you know, read them myself, I was a little bit confused, but you, but it sort of, it makes sense, right? So, so if you have, if everyone is fully vaccinated, then it is likely safe to gather indoors with those individuals without a mask or social distancing, if everyone is fully vaccinated. Okay? Now, you know, the caveat with all of this is that, that, you know, again, there's still this bit of a question mark on the variants, right? So, it is possible, and we know that the vaccine protects us, those that have been vaccinated, from getting severe disease. So, it's not 100% protection against getting some form of COVID infection. So, if I'm out and about, not wearing my mask, or I'm interacting with somebody in close proximity who sneezes or coughs or laughs or sings on me, and they're, you're, you know, infected, I might unknowingly have the COVID virus. But I'm protected, you know? But then I go and I sit next to an elderly person who's not vaccinated without my mask, and I might transmit that to them. So, again, you know, there's a lot of pent-up demand. We know that. People want to be close to their loved ones. And we've been anxiously trying to do our best to do the right thing. And we just want to know, when is it going to be safe? So, in this scenario where the cohort is fully vaccinated, the CDC has said, it's probably okay to gather with those individuals. Now, what about being with people who are not vaccinated? Well, that's where it gets a little trickier, right? So, if you see on the bottom there, that the older gentleman, he's around the bubble. So, that means he's been vaccinated. But you see that the child there, who's not been vaccinated, who's hugging his grandparent. So, in this case, these are individuals from the same household who are not vaccinated or coming into the home of a vulnerable person who's been vaccinated. And the CDC has said, that is probably okay. All right? So, because the old, the person who's considered vulnerable, the older person has been vaccinated, it's unlikely that he would get severe COVID because he's been fully vaccinated. Okay, next slide, please. So, now, we see a scenario where we've got different people from different households, some of whom are vaccinated, some who are not. And in this scenario, the CDC is saying, you know, you really probably shouldn't maintain social distance, and you should keep your mask on. Again, because we don't know, these are our friends or they're our family, but we don't know where they've been, right? We're making a lot of assumptions about who they've been in contact with. And you see on the, on the right-hand side, we still have our elderly gentleman, although he's been fully vaccinated, he still is potentially vulnerable. And you don't know the person on the left, she's, or the one in the, in the background, she may be someone who has higher risk because maybe she's undergoing cancer treatment or something of that nature. So, I think that, again, if you have multiple people gathering indoors, again, mixture of unvaccinated and vaccinated really should be maintaining social distancing and using our masks and all the other precautions. Next slide.
If you wouldn't mind a question that came in via the chat specifically to this, as folks are getting ready for the holidays, Easter, Passover, and any other things coming up in the near future. Ventilation, since we can, it's becoming springtime, does that impact, does that mitigate any risk here with mask-wearing and distancing if we're with family and friends that we know and trust?
Well, yes, the CDC says we shouldn't be in poorly ventilated spaces, even if we have a mask on. So, so if they're saying, is that if we're sure that the ventilation is good, can we take our mask off even though we've got multiple groups of people? The CDC didn't give specific guidance on that. You know, again, the, you know, there's a lot of variables, right? So, if a person, the type of mask that the person has, not everybody's using a two-ply surgical mask or an N95. So, some people might just be using a simple scarf. So, those we know do not provide the same level of protection as a, as a mask that has multiple layers of interlay. And again, the more complex the environment, the more the question marks will be. So, if the same group wanted to go outside, they would probably, even with their, in social distance, they'd probably be at lower risk. Because the risk indoors, even though you might have a mask on in social distance, if you're eating, you're taking your mask off, right? So, and you know, there's no magic to six feet, and there's no magic to the 15 minutes. It's just an estimate on what it would take to reasonably be far enough away if someone were to have a spray of, you know, body of saliva or something within your proximity.
Great, thank you so much for that. That was a question we've gotten, a lot of folks asking, eager to chat with you about. Thank you.
Yes. So, again, if the weather's nice, I think it would make sense to have people be outdoors. But to be, to be mindful of eating in close proximity with people who are not in your nuclear family and the time that you have your mask on. I think, I think I might have one more slide. So, so those are the things that have changed, that yes, you can, you know, gather with a member, members from a different household, but, but not more than one household. So, what hasn't changed about, you know, in, in public, we want to, if you're gathering with unvaccinated people from more than one household, we still want to wear our masks. Or if you're visiting with an unvaccinated person who's at increased risk of severe illness, or that person lives with a person. So, if the person you're interacting with could be interacting with somebody who's at risk for getting severe disease, then you want to be very cautious. So, you want to wear your mask, stay 60 apart, avoid crowds. And the CDC doesn't exactly define what a medium or large-size gathering is. You know, I think, again, we might have to use our judgment. Would small be less than, you know, six to eight people? And medium would be something that less than 20. And large is, obviously, we're not doing large anyway. So, you know, but, you know, so I think that, you know, if, if you're in your bubble and your, your nuclear family is vaccinated, then you can safely gather indoors without masks. The thing about travel, domestic and international travel, the CDC has not changed their guidance. But if you do travel, you just need to be mindful that you may be in spaces that are, that are cramped, that are poorly ventilated, that there'll be highly touched surfaces. So, you need to be cognizant that, you know, that you may, you want to make sure you have your hand sanitizer and your, and your, and your wipes. You may want to wear an eye covering or a shield in addition to a mask. A shield does not replace a mask. So, you'd need to really wear both. And you want to try to maintain as much distance as possible. And if you have symptoms, you should get tested and stay at home and stay away from others. The guidelines for the workplace have not changed yet. But we do see that people are making plans to return to, return to in-person work. Next slide. So, so again, you know, you know, they're not, not all of the answers are definitive. But we know that the vaccines are effective in preventing severe disease and death. And that's really, when we're in a situation where it's more than half a million people who, you know, died from this disease, that's really the bottom line. We're trying to prevent severe disease and death. We're still learning how effective the vaccines are against the variants. But the early signs suggest it does work against the variants. Now, we may eventually have to get a booster shot. But we believe that at least that our vaccine will protect us enough to get us over this initial hump so that we can lower our case rates. We know that the prevention steps help stop the spread. And that we want to continue to do, even if we're vaccinated. We want to continue to use the hand sanitizer. In public spaces, we still want to wear our masks. Again, because, you know, we don't have a tattoo that says we're vaccinated. We know part of it is being part of the public health effort to demonstrate that we're trying to protect everyone. But also, we don't want to unknowingly be exposed to COVID and then pass that on to others. And we're still learning how the COVID-19 vaccines help people from spreading the disease. So, it says, we believe that it does. But again, the principle of way that we're looking at the vaccines to help prevent severe disease. So, there were some questions that I got sent, but I mean, we can take some of the questions. Should I read through some of the ones that I got sent earlier? How would you like to do this?
Well, yeah, thank you. First of all, thank you from all of us. You covered some tremendous ground here. Let me turn this off so we could spotlight you. We do have a couple of questions in the chat box that, and many more coming in. I want to encourage everyone to use the chat. Richard Vaughn from Team CCRA is here. And do let us know if we have any instigators here. We'll be taking care of some of the inappropriate comments. Sorry about that, folks. It happens in the world of Zoom. But a couple of questions that have come in through the chat, sort of aggregated around things like, how does, how do the vaccinations affect people who are being tested? There's some folks saying that they're on things like Claritin and other medications. How does that interact? So, could you talk a little bit generically about both medical interactions and also how the vaccine affects testing? And then we'll kick it over to Richard for some more questions.
So, the vaccine really shouldn't, when you say testing for COVID?
Testing for things like blood labs and other medical diagnostics that people have, will vaccinations affect them in any way?
It really shouldn't. Now, you know, if you've got a test for an antibody, you may show signs of antibodies, which is what we do want. But really, the vaccines were tested on a real-world population. So, people with hypertension, diabetes, people who are on all sorts of medications. And really, for the vast majority of people, it is the right thing to do to be vaccinated. There might be some exceptions for people who are undergoing active chemotherapy or severely immunocompromised for one reason or another, that may need to check with their doctor. But again, for the vast majority of people, it's fine to be, to be vaccinated and it shouldn't be any issue. We do not recommend that people take a pre-medication before. So, not recommending that you take Motrin or Tylenol before your vaccine. If you have to take Tylenol afterwards, you can. But we prefer, you know, but we want that antibody reaction to, to take place. So, some of the symptoms that people experience are really those antibodies being wrapped up in your system. So, that's the only caveat I would give to that. I think someone also had a question about, is it safe to have, you know, elective procedures like colonoscopies and mammograms? We absolutely want people to get their preventive testing and to see their doctor if they need to. There's a lot of things that can be done on telemedicine, but you can't do a colonoscopy on telemedicine, although people will probably want to. But, so what I would say is that, you know, one of the concerns we do have in the, in the health system is that there's going to be a wave of things that happen as a result of people delaying care. And that's going to be the second wave of issue that we contend with, you know, delay diagnosis of cancer. So, definitely, you know, once you feel comfortable in your back, you know, you know, reach out to your, your, your provider and get those things scheduled. We've actually been, you know, screening people even prior to the vaccination. We've done a lot, one of the things that the health systems have done a really good job of making it safe for our patients. We want to make sure that people have the confidence that they can access the care that they need.
That's terrific. Thank you for that. Yeah, I think a lot of questioning, the questions about testing and taking care of yourself while vaccinating. But also, Richard, forgive me for stepping on your toes. I'll let you take all the questions from here on out. But the logical follow-up to that is, after vaccinating, when is it safe to return to things like surgical procedures? Is there any impact?
Again, I would say that we have been scheduling patients for surgery since after the first wave. So, back in gym. So, if you have a procedure that you've been delaying, I would urge you to, assuming that procedure is necessary, I mean, and still needed, I would urge you to reach out to your physician or your provider and get that back on the books. I think it's important not to delay necessary care much longer than we already have.
Great, thank you for that. Richard, I see we have a couple of questions coming in. And I'll kick it to you, Richard Vaughn from Team CCRA.
Thank you. One, somebody asked, what about shopping for clothing? Is that now more safe than it was?
Well, I think similar to, I think there have been a lot of safeguards that have been put in place. And in most places, they still have limits on the number of people that can enter a store. Some stores don't allow you to change the clothing in the store. So, they've, they've made decisions that they're going to do or not do certain things. I would say if you've been fully vaccinated, again, in public, you're going to wear your mask, you're going to have your hand sanitizer. You know, if you've been fully vaccinated, that you should feel, I think, anytime, since we've been so long without being in close proximity, I think it's not unusual for people to feel a little nervous if you see more people. If you don't feel comfortable, you should leave, but you should be relatively safe.
Okay. In a similar fashion, people are asking about, what about going to gyms now? Now that you're fully vaccinated? Is that now different?
Yeah, I think that, again, the gym is likely going to require you to use, to continue to wear your mask. But again, the risk to the individual who's been vaccinated should be relatively low. So, the theoretical risk is that, you know, you might be exposed, but the risk to the person who's vaccinated should be relatively low.
Okay, okay. Somebody asked about movie theaters. Is that the same answer there?
So, again, they're going to have their restrictions on capacity. And it's going to be a place where they're probably not going to have you sitting next to, right next to somebody. But you'll maybe in a high-touch surface area. The ventilation may or may not be very excellent. So, you'll be next to people who are not fully vaccinated. So, some of that's going to be a comfort level. So, theoretically, it should be, theoretically, it should be safe. Because again, that person who's been fully vaccinated should be at low risk for getting severe COVID. But they may interact with somebody who exposes them, and then if you then go to somebody else. So, you know, I don't know that I personally will be going to a movie theater in the next few months. I probably want to, personally want to wait till a greater percentage of the population is vaccinated. But again, you know, a lot of gyms are not full these days. So, I think, you know, when you can control your environment, I think you'll better be better off. Similarly to restaurants, right? If you could feel more in control of your environment, if you're in one of those little pods or you're in a restaurant that you know has, pays high attention to detail and is fastidious about their cleanliness, and the waiters are wearing masks, and everybody looks like they're playing by the rules. I think, you know, you can, you can probably venture out there once you're vaccinated.
Jonathan, do you want to go to the next speaker?
Yeah. First of all, Dr. Brooks, thank you. We know you're so busy. Hopefully, if you have a few more minutes to stay with us. We wanted a colleague of yours in the community. Hopefully, he's still with us. I believe he is. Dr. Jay Cosman from Philly Fight. I believe you're on. Let's turn those.
I am.
Excellent. Welcome.
Thank you.
Find you here too. There he is. We're going to put you in the spotlight here. Excellent. Dr. Cosman, obviously, in addition to major community centers like Jefferson, organizations like Philadelphia Fight, Babashi, many others in the community are doing great outreach to those who need the support most. So, can you tell us a little bit about your work and how you're collaborating with the bigger Philly picture around getting folks vaccinated and supported?
Sure. Thank you, Jonathan. And it's a, it's a pleasure to be here this late afternoon and talk about our efforts. So, by way of very, very quick background, so Philadelphia Fight is a 30-year-old, what began as an aid service organization in Center City. And about six years ago, we became a federally qualified health center. So, in addition to providing HIV care and being one of the largest HIV providers in the city, we provide primary care as well now to a total of about 60. we provide primary care uh as well now to a total of about uh six thousand patients in Philadelphia. And so what we've done in terms of our vaccine efforts really started with our own patients um and making vaccine available to our patients beginning about now six to eight weeks ago. Um, as part of that, though, as as we started to expand our services, we also began and have continued to provide vaccine to members of the community. And the way we've done who are not necessarily our patients. And the way we've done that is um, we have an online registration at W W W dot fight dot org where members of the community can sign up if they're not fight patients. Um, and on that form, there are just questions. You still have to be in the current tier for what is um, what is advisable and recommended by the city of Philadelphia. So currently, tier one B. So you have to meet those um criteria. Um, we've currently given two thousand shots. Some of those are second by our people who've gotten series of two. Um, and it's a total of about twelve hundred and fifty individuals who have been, who have received a COVID vaccine as of now. Part of that online registration for our um non-patients is the fact that we sort of have a an on-call list for the end of a session. And when you register, one of the questions that's asked is can you get to our site? Which currently, we're doing one of our sites at twelve thirty-three Locust Street um where all of our vaccines are being done. And um, so we're asking, can you get to that site within ten to twenty minutes? Because at the end of the day, um, as Dr. Brooks outlined, so you're giving vaccine, depending on which vaccine you're using, and currently, we've been using the Moderna vaccine, although that may change within the next week or so. But there are a certain number of doses in each vial. And so at the end of the day, you may have extra doses for the number of people that were signed up and and coming in. And so that's one of the questions we ask is are you available at the end of the day? If we call you, can you get in within ten to fifteen minutes? Because then we can vaccinate you sort of on an on-call basis. As an example of that, our team has also worked with um the restaurants in our area to um make vaccine available for food service workers who um again, might be present at the end of the day. And so our team has contacts with the general managers of some of those restaurants. So they can say, we have five vaccines left. Do you have employees who can come over and get vaccinated? So that those are are some of the air, some of the ways that we've that we've interfaced with the community, not just our patients. I I will say that we certainly in the beginning concentrated on vaccinating uh our patients first, but we're not limiting it to that as well. And I will also say in talking to our team that really has has engineered this effort that the response to the online registration and being available is overwhelming, actually, and and really unfortunately still exceeds the capacity of of our team to vaccinate. But this is a changing field. Um, and particularly as the Johnson and Johnson vaccine becomes more available, one of the things that we're going to ask is, you know, would it be more advantageous for certain groups of people to be to get a single shot vaccine rather than have to come back for a second shot? And and so, you know, those are, those are some of the things that that we'll be looking for as we move forward.
That's terrific, and and thank you so, so much for the work. Obviously, both of you and your organizations are doing. But um, Dr. Cosman, a question that came in from the chat um is uh terrific about uh specific to how we're helping those less fortunate. Um, how how are organizations like Philadelphia Fight and your community partners helping to assist the homeless? Those in the Center City community that many of us work with and and want to support? How can we refer uh them to information? Um, and also, what is the location for some of those end of the day shots?
Right. So currently, uh, the second part first, currently, all of our vaccination efforts are done at twelve thirty-three Locust Street in a in in our main building. Um, uh, this will probably change. Our our other major clinical location is twelve oh seven Chestnut Street. Um, and although we're currently not um vaccinating mostly because of capacity at that point, as we expand, um, our Chestnut Street site will probably also be available. Um, but currently, twelve thirty-three Locust is is where uh all of our vaccine efforts are concentrated. The issue about the um, the um, the homeless population in general or specifically, sorry, is a really important one. And making sure that that population is um, is availed of the uh of being vaccinated is extremely important. And so um, some in in our case, for instance, we have a clinic um at Broad Street Ministry that we've had for a couple of years. And so we have a patient base of that population. And so for that patient base, we are making um vaccine available um for them. But also through uh the online registration, um, again, with if if they have the ability or if they have help to be able to register, then if they fall into tier one A or one B, then they can be registered and then vaccinated as community members as well. We anticipate and we're actually working on some um lower tech ways also to get people to enter into our system. And those I, those aren't available yet, but hopefully, within the next two to three weeks will be. Um, but um, agree with the question that that reaching that population is incredibly important as we as we move forward with vaccination efforts.
That's so helpful. Thank you. Um, we are, as you're probably seeing in the chat box, we are uh drowning in in the best possible way and so many good, good questions. So we've got uh two terrific experts here. I will kick it back to Richard uh to help facilitate some of these. And thank both so much for your uh input here.
Sure. We got a question about someone asked if their lab blood work would be affected by having been vaccinated.
Oh, Dr. Brooks. Oh, let me see. There we are.
Okay. Uh, it should not be. Uh, it should not be effective.
Okay. Um, people are asking about public transportation, SEPTA, Uber, buses, airplanes. What what's new now that we're vaccinated?
Really, um, I I think it falls along the same lines of what we were discussing that comes to, you know, being in, you know, less than ideal ventilation for prolonged periods of time in close proximity with other people. If you've been vaccinated, again, the personal risk to you should be very low. Um, you know, there's a theoretical risk that you could be exposed um and then theoretically exposed to somebody else who might not be vaccinated. So again, um, you know, people who've had to take public transportation have been doing that throughout the pandemic. I think, you know, the 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 SEPTA and the transportation services have aimed to do everything they can to keep people safe. Um, I think there the X factor is you can't control the behavior of the people. So um, I think that if if you need to take public transportation, you know, and you're to use all precautions, I think that that is um certainly something that's uh should be something that you should be able to do. And I think, you know, I've taken Ubers. Um, I might not take the lowest level of Uber. I might, I probably, I definitely wouldn't take an Uber pool. But uh, I think that, you know, again, it's gonna be up to a comfort level. They've been, they're all advised to wear masks, they're on cleaning protocols. And so um, again, they have a lot of at stake as well to make sure that they're making their riders feel uh comfortable.
Yeah, thank you. This is more of a legal question. Um, can restaurants insist that its employees be vaccinated or is that illegal?
No, I don't have the answer to that, but what I can say is that's a health system. We did not mandate um vaccination for our employees. Um, there are a lot of, could potentially be a lot of discussion about that. We do mandate the flu vaccine, but given that the vaccine, this is a public health emergency and the vaccines were uh approved under emergency use author, emergency use authorization. You know, our leadership did not feel that we were in a position to mandate that. Um, a private entity, um, a small business may have the ability to to do things that, you know, a large business may not be able to do. Um, you know, you know, I think what we would prefer to do is to uh speak to uh, you know, our, we've been, you know, hitting the ground, having discussions, one-on-one, small groups, big town halls like this to basically make the case why everybody should um to be that should be vaccinated. And uh, if if, you know, we recognize that there might be a small percentage of people who actually cannot be, and it's our responsibility to protect those folks. Um, and the only way we're gonna do that is the vast majority of people who can get vaccinated, you can determine.
Okay. Uh, here's another question. I volunteer as a cashier at Philly AIDS Thrift. Is it safe to go back to my job after I'm fully vaccinated? It means a lot of exposure to the public.
Again, that's not gonna be a a judgment call. I think, again, if you're vaccinated, the theoretical risk to you is low. Again, but you cannot control the behavior of the people with whom you're interacting. There are, there are safeguards that have been put in place in a lot of um uh businesses, like the Plexiglas. Um, uh, you know, the the shields, uh, the the people can use shields as well as face masks. Um, people use the protocols where they wipe down the surfaces frequently or they have no-touch cash, um, no, no cash and no-touch transactions. I think if you could reasonably, if, you know, I think the 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 piece that we haven't talked about is the mental health piece of this, of the, you know, being able to be of service to others and how that might benefit um a person. And so I think if you feel as though you can create an environment that is safe where you feel comfortable and you feel like you can reasonably take precautions and that the patrons are not gonna put you at additional risk, then, you know, I think that that would be a valuable thing to consider doing.
If, uh, Richard, if you don't mind me, a question I was just texted actually from someone who's in our our chat with us here. Um, that actually dovetails off of what Dr. Brooks just said, and it might be perfect for you, Dr. Cosman, is uh, you, Dr. Brooks mentioned about the psychological effects and and creating uh, you know, mental health care awareness around what we're all going through around COVID. Obviously, Philadelphia Fight does a lot of work in in holistic care for every part of the person as well. Are there things that you're recommending to people at all sorts of scales and price points and things like that that can be effective remedies for what we're feeling? Uh, do's and don'ts around the emotional support we need right now as well?
You know, what what we do, we have the advantage in all of our clinics of having behavioral health counselors um available for all of our patients. And I would say, you know, we, the vast majority of their use during this time period has been in helping people deal with multiple issues around the pandemic, including, you know, not being able to work, including grandparents who aren't able to see their grandchildren, parents who aren't able to see their children, vice versa. Um, so I I I think voicing those concerns um is step one, realizing that they're there and then just being able to talk through them, uh, you know, and understand. And and, you know, being one of the major things I think that we're seeing now is this sense of hope that people have now that there is, there are, not just is, but are effective vaccines. But, and that's great. Um, but I think, you know, not all of what Dr. Brooks said in terms of not letting your guard down during this time is still really important. And so balancing those things, um, I, you know, I think is is incredibly important. But also to just tell people, yes, that your your feelings are real. Um, and they're being shared by many people. And here are some ways that you can try to deal with them. And and so I think um all of those are really important points.
That's terrific. I'll say as a point, you know, uh, I I have been a beneficiary of telemedicine throughout all of this, being able to continue talking with uh therapists about uh all the many things that we're feeling. And and what's great, the city of Philadelphia has some terrific free mental health care resources as do many of our medical institutions. And if anyone has questions, reach out to us at C C R A. We can help you find them. All right, Richard, take it away.
Okay, um, we're getting questions about act outdoor activities like the Man Music Center or Phillies Games or things like that. What's the latest on that?
Um, you know, I don't have specific information about the the guidance. Um, but again, I think the common theme here is going to be, you know, a person's risk tolerance level, right? Again, the risk to the vaccinated person is very low. So if you've been fully vaccinated, the risk that you will develop severe COVID is gonna be vanishingly small, uh, but not zero. Um, and so uh, the more one interacts with um people that you don't know, who's, you don't know where they've been, you don't know how consistent they are with their mask use. There's a theoretical risk that you could be exposed to um a kind of a variant that's not totally covered by your vaccine and then interact with somebody who um, who uh, you know, who might be more vulnerable. Um, but that being said, I mean, a lot of um, a lot of people have a big stake in making sure they get it right. So when they open up and and have these protocols, I think the challenge, challenge is they don't really tell you how enjoyable it's gonna be, right? So you could go to a restaurant, but nobody wants to look at you in the eye or touch you or or get close to you. And it's a different experience. So I think similarly, going to a baseball game with, you know, less than, you know, half the people there, you know, it it may be something um we're all looking forward to. But uh, I think we just have to proceed with caution. I probably, again, would wait, I would probably personally wait until a higher percentage of people are vaccinated before I go into um a large venue. And I'm aching to get back to the Kimball Center and the Annenberg. I really, I can't wait. Um, but again, you know, it, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait until a higher percentage of people are vaccinated.
When you, when you say you're gonna wait till a higher percentage, you have, you have a number in mind?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, um, I'm hoping that by the fall, things will be a lot better.
Okay, okay. Um, we're getting anecdotal reports of people having some fairly strong reactions to the second shot. Fevers, chills, in bed for a day and a half. We've been told that that means that the immune system is working. Now, what if you don't have any reaction to the second shot? Does that say anything about your immune system not working or is it a crap shoot?
Uh, no, I mean, again, because the efficacy is over ninety, is ninety-four, ninety-five percent, it's working um for everybody. But, you know, you're right, it's the, that's the vigor of of um how the immune system works. It's really a mystery that we haven't come.
Okay, okay. Okay, um, here's a question. If I, if I give blood prep, if I give blood between the first and second shot, will this reduce the effectiveness of the vaccine?
That's a very specific question that I don't have the answer to. I, you know, theoretically, no. Um, but, you know, given that blood is an elective sort of thing, I probably, you know, wouldn't complicate matters.
Okay.
You stump the doctor, everybody drink.
Yeah, I just don't.
Go ahead, Richard.
Okay, someone's asking here, I don't know if this is relevant or not, is there evidence of fomite transmission? And if not, what is the point of obsessive surface scrubbing other than the sense that cleanliness is good?
Well, that's, that's a good question. I think um, the the evidence, um, more recent evidence is that the contact was less of a a method of transmission and than through um aerosols, um, through laughing, singing, speaking, you know, touching your nose face and then touching other people. Um, but in in general, there is a, you know, the, there is a, you know, a small risk that touching highly contact, high contact surfaces and then touching your face. I mean, people probably are better at it now, but a lot of people unconsciously um touched parts of their bodies. So if you happen to land your hand in a pile of COVID um infection and then touch your face immediately, or your eyes even for that matter, um, there's a, there is a risk of transmission. So uh, but again, the mo- So, uh, but again, the mo- majority of people are exposed through close proximity, um, through, um, nose or mouth secretions.
Someone wants to know if it's smart to take vitamins either before or after being vaccinated. Does that make a difference?
I don't think it makes a difference. I think if you want to take vitamins, that's a, that's a good thing to do.
Um, and after the, after the second vaccine, is it smart to take like an Advil or Tylenol or?
Uh, I think I mentioned this before, I would recommend not taking it before and don't take it unless you absolutely need to take it.
Okay.
Again, we don't want to mitigate the, um, you know, any of the immune response.
Okay, okay. Um, people, someone's asking about attending places of worship now, especially with the holidays coming up.
And I think there are plans for how, for how they can do that safely. Uh, again, um, you know, um, so there should be, you know, protocols for social distancing and capacity. Um, and also sort of, uh, proximity to, um, I'm sure they have cleaning protocols, et cetera. So, um, assuming your house of worship has those protocols in place, um, it should be for the person who's vaccinated, it should be okay.
Uh, someone has a question about the new variants and what, what the thinking is on that as far as being protected.
I think I showed a slide earlier that, um, kind of showed some, again, the evidences is evolving. It's thought that, um, the, the UK variant, most of the vaccines are pretty well protective. For the South African variant, um, maybe, uh, maybe not as much. Um, so, uh, but again, all the evidence suggests that, you know, the vaccine that we have, that the ones that we have available, um, are helping to protect people from developing severe COVID. So more to come on that, but for right now, we still want to get our, the vaccines that we have.
And a good follow-up, Richard, uh, actually, Dr. Cosman, you brought up about, um, you know, we're still learning more about boosters and follow-up and all, you know, we're, we're all evolving on what we need to know next. Richard, I think there was a question there about do, should we be getting ready for boosters? Will that be an annual thing?
Right.
Or do we not know yet?
Right, we don't know yet. Um, you know, if, if I would, if I had, I'm not going to even bet, but I think, I think that, um, it's quite possible.
Okay.
Dr. Cosman, same for you?
Uh, I probably would bet and I would say, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna end up needing to get boosters at some point. But, um, I look at that as that's a good thing because that means we've understood how the virus has changed and what we need to do to continue to protect ourselves.
Right, it's going to be an ongoing thing.
And that would allow the, um, uh, whatever variants that are out there at the time, allow people to be protected from that.
We're getting a lot of questions from grandparents. As you can imagine, and they're saying, look, I've been vaccinated, but is there any risk that I can transmit this to I, my lovely grandchildren?
So, but the assumption is, is that the grandparents are less out and about than the grandchildren. So it's, it's less likely that the grandparents would be transmitting something to the children. Um, so, uh, you know, again, if this is, if you have your, a, a family from one household coming in, um, the CDC suggests that that's okay for you to be in proximity with them. Is it theoretically possible that the grandchildren could have a variant that could then be passed to the grandparent theoretically? But again, this is all risk benefit and, and, you know, the CDC is suggesting that, you know, it's, it's okay to, if you're fully vaccinated, for you to have members from one other household come and visit.
And one more, um, person says that their cousin had COVID last March. And the doctor friend is saying that since they had COVID, they don't need, and they have the antibodies now, they don't need a vaccine. That sounds like that's not true, Dr. Cosman.
That is not true. That is not true. They should be vaccinated.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I think we're getting toward the end here. Um, I think we might be out of good questions at this point.
Well, and they were all great questions. Uh, Richard, thank you so much for fielding them. Um, Dr. Cosman, Dr. Brooks, thank you. I know we've, at, at our height here, we had almost two hundred people on this call, uh, which is two hundred more informed Philadelphians than we had at five PM. So thank you. We are, we are deeply appreciative of your time. I know all of us at, uh, CCRA, uh, and all of our supporting organizations who helped, uh, push this program out today are so grateful for your time. Want to once again thank, um, Independence Business Alliance, Philadelphia Fight, of course, Dr. Cosman, Philly Family Pride, Liberty City Dems, Action Wellness, Babashi, Washington Square West Civic Association, Global Philadelphia and more. It, we, as, as in all things in Philadelphia, it's about all the people coming together. And you helped answer a lot of the questions that we had. And there are many more in the chat that we didn't get to. What is the best way, if people have questions, to you, uh, to follow up, to learn more? Where would you send people who had questions on the go?
Well, we do have a, a website, it's called the, for the Real Talk Campaign, and we have some contact information, um, through there. Um, and we, I can send that to you sort of after the, after the talk and you can get it out to folks. There was a question about what, what vaccines we're offering at Jefferson. And the answer is we're offering the vaccines that we get allotted and we take them and say thank you. So we have Moderna and Pfizer, and we're now just starting getting some of the, um, the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. Um, and Johnson and Johnson vaccine, um, is, is likely going to be the one that we do look to, um, vaccinate our more vulnerable populations. Dr. Cosman was mentioning the homeless population, perhaps people with, um, that have, um, mental illness or people who are in transient, um, sort of circumstances. So I think the, you know, the, it's, uh, the feeling is one of hope and optimism. And if you all can all reach out to a loved one and convey, um, you know, help to spread the word about the importance of, uh, taking your turn, uh, when they get that, that call. I think in a few months, we'll be in a much better position.
Excellent. Dr. Cosman, you too?
Agree completely. And we also at, at the Philadelphia Fight website, there are also, you can, there, there's information there that, that people can get as well.
Great. And we'll make sure, uh, that Center City Residents Association puts us all up on their Facebook page, uh, all of these follow-up links and information, of course, the link to this video for anyone that missed it. Uh, as, as Dr. Brooks just said, spread the love, spread the wealth, make sure we're taking care of one another. That's what we do best in Philadelphia. Uh, and speaking of, join us at CenterCityResidence.org to become a member, learning all about how to support one another in Center City and all of our partner businesses and organizations. We are in this together. So from all of us at CCRA, again, thank you, Dr. Brooks, Dr. Cosman, to Jefferson and all of our partners. Here's to much healthy, happy, happier, healthier days ahead. And, and.
Right. Take care, be well.
Everybody.
They say.
Bye-bye.
And thank you, Team CCRA. Great job.